Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. All council meetings are live streamed on the city's webpage. We are now having our meeting remotely because of the closure of the City County Building. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Reverend Burgess. Pro Tem.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much. As we join for our remote locations, you may rise or simply put your hand on your heart as we together recite the pledge allegiance and then we will have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So, vote.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Agenda is amended. Our next order of business is proclamation. We have one to be read into the record from Mr. Kraus.
Mr. Kraus presents Bill Number 803. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh recognizes and embraces the efforts of the Children's Sickle Cell Foundation and their commitment to bringing quality programs to the children, adults, and families that are affected by sickle cell disease. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh, let's hereby declare Friday, October 7th, 2022, to be Children's Sickle Cell Foundation Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve. You second.
Okay.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay.
Mr. Chair, just very brief, if I may?
Of course.
Yeah, just recognizing the work of Andrea Williams, who's now Andrea Matthews, as the head of, not only the head, but the founder of the Children's Sickle Cell Foundation and her son Jonathan, who's now 20, I believe. And we will be meeting with them on Friday as they host their event to celebrate, I believe it's now 20 years of service to the community. And I just want to recognize Andrea, her family, and all the amazing work that she has done throughout the years with this proclamation. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, see no other proclamations. That takes us to the next word of business, which is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comment are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are, which, which are, or may be for, be before council. Perfidy will not be permitted. And I'm not sure if our speakers are on. I will certainly read their names though. First is Ronald, our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Not sure if he's on. Now, the Miller, were you able to get on with us?
No, I don't see him.
Our next registered speaker is Kim Christine. Looks like Immler? Is she on, Kim?
No, I don't see her either.
Is there any other speakers who are, who have, have, have found their way onto our live stream today? Who want to speak before council? Anyone else that's here? Seeing none, we will move on. The next order of business will be presentations of patients, of papers. Mr. Coghill, I'm not sure if he's on for me, which is the Chair of Urban Recreation. I don't think I have any new papers. I've not, I don't think. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works. Ms. Gross for Mr. Coghill, I suppose. Then clerk?
Mr. Coghill. Mr. Coghill presents Bill Number 790. Resolution providing for supplemental agreement or agreements with the Larson Design Group, Inc. For costs associated with West Ohio Street and Ridge Avenue Bridges Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $832,132.94, an increase of $7,024.04 from the previously executed agreement as previously authorized by Resolution 925 of 2021. Bill Number 791. Resolution expressly authorizing and recognizing the delegation by the mayor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Secretary of Transportation, for authority to acquire right of way necessary to complete the Fern Hollow Bridge project as provided and an intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by Council Resolution 20 of 2022.
Is there a motion to waive rule eight on Bill 791?
Mr. Pro Tem, I'd like to motion to waive rule eight so that this bill can appear on our next standing committee agenda.
You second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. It is approved and will appear on this afternoon's standing committee's meeting. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. Pro Tem, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 792. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Urban Redevelopment Authority in the amount of $350,212.91 for an extension of our previous land care contract. Bill Number 793. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Allegheny County with respect to the winter seasons of 2022 to 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25, November 1 to March 31st of each year, under which 1A, the city will store handle and load salt for the county, and B, the county will store handle and load salt for the city, and 2A, the city will perform snow and ice clearance together with the application of anti-skid and/or de-icing materials for certain county roads, including bridges with their approaches, and the county will perform snow and ice clearance together with the application of anti-skid and/or de-icing materials for certain city roads, including bridges and their approaches. Bill Number 794. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 451 Melwood Avenue, Pittsburgh, 15213. Bill Number 795. Resolution requesting the approval of an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from White Hawks Social Club, 1025 Whitney Court, Metro PA, to applicant The Village Social Club Plus Incorporated, care of Karen Mitchell of Pittsburgh for the premises located at 48 Greenway Drive, Pittsburgh, PA, 15204, known as The Village Social Club Plus pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, I may have an outdated agenda. I did have a bill for introduction this morning on quality of life ticketing. Do you have that? You have that? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 804. Orton in supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article 1 by adding Chapter 619A entitled Quality of Life Violations.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 796. Resolution amending Resolution 469 of 2020, which authorizes the mayor and the director of finance to enter into a professional services agreement with CHR Catering Company, Inc. For the purposes of providing the City of Pittsburgh with beverage and snack food vending services through vending machines.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, her first committee, as the Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 797. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with NeoGov for the continual maintenance of software for HR workforce management, applicant tracking, and civil service testing, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed $36,000.
Thank you very much. That takes us back to Councilwoman Strasburger, the Chair of Innovation, Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 798. Resolution amending Resolution 541 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with Monday.com, an online project management and portfolio management tool for use with multiple city departments by increasing the not to exceed amount to $106,000.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 799. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into many grant reimbursement agreements for the 2022 Love Your Block Program at a cost not to exceed $20,000. Bill Number 800. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Hertzaw Way, in the 27th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in September 2022. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you very much. We have a communication on behalf of Councilwoman Kell Smith, the Chair of Hearings.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 801. Communication from Jennifer Gula, Acting Director and Treasurer, submitting the amount of the minimum municipal obligation MMO that the city is required to contribute to the pension fund in 2023 dated September 2022.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to read, receive, and file?
Motion to read, receive, and file, please.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. That brings us now to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, we will now move to the next word of business is report of committee for final action, starting with, as always, Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Mr. President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 783. Reported a committee on finance and law for September 28, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 750. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020 as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by reducing bridge upgrades by $500,000 and increasing West Carson Street Bridge by $500,000. Bill Number 755. Resolution transferring a total of $410,000 within the 2022 operating budget from the Office of Management and Budget in Parks and Recreation to the Office of the City Clerk. This transfer is to correctly budget funds that are to be utilized by City Council to provide grants to community and sports groups.
Thank you very much. You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye on 750, no on 755, please.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Reverend Burgess Pro Tem.
Aye.
Six ayes on Bill 750 and five ayes and one no on Bill 755.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Let's take us to Councilman Kraus, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 784. Reported a committee on public safety services for September 28, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 748. Resolution amending Resolution 898 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an amended professional service agreement with Lexapole LLC for software subscription-based policy management, wellness and training services at an overall cost not to exceed $557,049.67. The current agreement is being amended in order to add funds for two additional years subscription to the Cortico Wellness App utilized by personnel in the Bureau of Police, Fire, and Emergency Services. Bill Number 778. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by Clean Team ambassadors within the South Side Parking Enhancement District at a total cost not to exceed $375,000.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. On favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Kell Smith. Reverend Burgess Pro Tem.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nos.
That brings us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Ms. Gross is presenting for Mr. Coghill.
Mr. Pro Tem, thank you.
Mr. Coghill presents Bill Number 785. Reported a committee on public works for September 28, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 744. Resolution providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the West Carson Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $900,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement or agreements at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh not to exceed $1,500. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number 745. Resolution providing for reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary design phase of the Penn Avenue Signal Improvement Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $753,660. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost to the City of Pittsburgh not to exceed $6,000. Future resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. And Bill Number 765. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development, Keystone Communities Grant Program, to provide funding for the rehabilitation of the McKinley Park Community Center. The grant proposal includes a request of $500,000 with a local match of $600,000 to come from the City of Pittsburgh's 2022 and 2023 capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement not to exceed $1,160,000 for this stated purpose.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Mr. Chair, briefly, if I may?
It's gross.
Thank you. Bill 765, continued support of Hilltop Communities by this administration, especially as it relates to McKinley Park, which is the epicenter of activity in many of the Hilltop neighborhoods. I'm very excited about this and appreciative to the administration for continuing this kind of support to Hilltop neighborhoods. So, thank you very much.
Any other conversation? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. On favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerks please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Pro Tem.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, the Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 786. Reported a committee on human resources for September 28, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 751. Resolution providing that the City of Pittsburgh enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with employers' choice screening for professional services in connection with pre-employment and promotional background investigations for all City of Pittsburgh candidates, including excluding uniformed police, fire, and EMS personnel, and providing for the payment cost not to exceed $200,000 over four years.
The bill is, I'm sorry. You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. On favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Pro Tem.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 787. Reported a committee on land use and economic development for September 28, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 753. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 606 of 2020, effective December 1, 2020 as amended, entitled Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreement with agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services and/or data collection activities as associated with the 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a cost not to exceed $1,216,133 and 2020 housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, Hopewith funds at a cost not to exceed $1,140,292 by amending various emergency solutions grant line items and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreement.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Pro Tem.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That brings me or the Committee on Urban Recreation, again, Ms. Gross is introducing the bill on my behalf.
Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 788. Reported a committee on urban recreation for September 28, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 749. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a license agreement or agreements with the University of Pittsburgh in order to conduct free clinical testing activities for seniors at city recreation and/or senior centers through programs, including but not limited to those offered by the School of Health and Rehabilitation Sciences and the School of Pharmacy. The license agreement shall be at no cost to either party.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. On favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Pro Tem.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Mr. Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 789. Reported a committee on intergovernmental affairs for September 28, 2022 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 746. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for property located at the corner of Sapphire Way in Oregon Street, Allegheny County at Block and Lots 26H 338 and 26H 339. And Bill Number 768. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Urban Redevelopment Authority in order to receive a grant from the Pennsylvania Budget Office Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the renovation of Warrington Recreation Center in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000 and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Ms. Gross.
Thank you. Again, on Bill 768, I just want to recognize the continuing support of this Allegheny administration for their investment in the Warrington Rec. Again, just like McKinley Rec epicenter of neighborhood, I can't even begin to recount the kinds of services that are provided through Warrington Recreation Center and McKinley Rec Center, and it's just so uplifting to see this kind of investment taking place in the rec centers in the Hilltop neighborhoods. And I, I just want to offer up my thanks and congratulations to the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other conversation? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. On favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Pro Tem.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nos.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That brings us to motions and resolutions. Is there anything before the members of the council that are before me?
Mr. Chair, may I?
Mr. Kraus.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure how many members may have known former commander Karen Dixon. I met Karen when I first chaired Public Safety Committee, and she was overseeing the Training Center, and there were some issues they were having there, and I was able to go over and assist, and it's where I met her, and over the years we became fast friends. And for the last seven years of her service to the city, she was the Zone Commander for Zone 3, and she retired just about a year ago. I got word this morning that her husband passed last night after a brief illness, and they truly were best friends, and, and my heart goes out to her. And especially after, you know how that goes, you retire and you, you plan, you know, to have a great time and enjoy those years with. you know, to have a great time and enjoy those years with your spouse, and you became sick and had brief illness and passed. So, I just want members to be aware that that has happened, and if you did have the opportunity to build a relationship with Commander Dixon, I'm sure she would be very happy to hear from you in offering of condolences. And then, this morning, we introduced what has become known as quality of life ticketing legislation. And many of you, over the years, have heard me bemoan billions of times about the number one call we receive in our offices, really around waste management, and then followed by weeds and parking. And so, if the legislation only went out last night, but if you have not had a chance to review it, there will be ample time. My chief of staff, Bob Sharland, has spent the better part of a year, perhaps longer, working to craft this very detailed piece of legislation, which we are very, very proud to present. I am going to call for a post-agenda so that we can examine it at length. I know many members experience the same kinds of frustration that we do around waste management and everything that that entails. And when this comes up on Wednesday, I will be calling for, actually, I'll call for it now when I finish my remarks, to hold a post-agenda, to have a better presentation of the bill to the public and council at large, but I do want to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Bob Sharland for his unwavering dedication to this piece of legislation and an enormous amount of work that has gone into it, and I believe it will ultimately serve the citizens of Pittsburgh much better than what we have been able to serve them in the past. So, thank you for the time to make remarks, and with that, I would like to motion to host and chair a post-agenda on the quality of life ticketing ordinance that was introduced this morning.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposers, nay. That will be a cable cast post-agenda. I'm assuming when this bill comes before us that you're introduced. Next week, you'll hold it. I have a question for you, Mr. Kraus.
Sure.
You want to, if you wanted to, we could revisit that bill that you introduced. We could waive it so that you can just hold it this afternoon and get it, or we can just wait till next week. It's up to you. I'm just giving you an option since you scheduled, since you motioned for the post-agenda prior to the bill hitting the table.
Appreciate that, Mr. Chair. So, yes, being that we, it is October, we're entering an incredibly busy time of year. There's a lot of discussion that will take place around this. So, yes, I would like to motion to waive the rules. Forgive me, Madam Clerk, on Bill.
Eight oh four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, eight oh four, so that it may appear on this afternoon's standing committee agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. That bill will be presented this afternoon, which will probably be, you know, held for the post-agenda. Anything else before council? I do want to say, I want to say, first of all, an appreciation to President Smith, who, this morning, once the city council building was shut for her leadership in quickly, we had no internet, both the, we have both water and no internet. And so, she worked diligently this morning to be able for us to have our scheduled meetings. I want to thank Clerk, Kim Clerk, of course, and her excellence for, I think you're in the chamber somewhere, helping us to get online, and we want to thank the Cable Bureau for its quick response and everybody who participated so that this meeting could be had in accordance to our Home Rule Charter and according to the Sunshine Laws of the state, and thank the members for being flexible enough to, the one good thing about, one good thing about the pandemic is it's given us a lot of experience of learning to meet remotely, and so, we were able to do this fairly quickly because we already had this experience from COVID, and so, it's one of the silver linings of the COVID experience. And again, to thank President Teresa Smith, Teresa Kell Smith, for her leadership in making this meeting come about in this afternoon's meeting. Is there anything else before members, before I move on? All right. If not, this afternoon at one thirty, council will hold their standing committees meeting. Again, it will be remote. Speaker registration closes at twelve thirty PM today. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, October eleventh, and Wednesday, October twelfth, at ten AM respectively. Speaker registration will close at nine AM, October eleventh, for the regular meeting, and nine AM to twelve for the standing committees meeting. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You may also call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, two one three eight. With that, I need a motion to do three things, excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours is nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.